And we will call the Curville City Council Workshop to order on December 12th, 2023, at four o'clock. I just said that. Are there any public speakers?
No ma'am, no one signed up.
All right, thank you. So, we will begin, I believe, with Playhouse 2000. Michael, do you need... Oh, Michael stepped out of the room. So, we'll just start with you.
Start me?
Jeff, yes.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me here.
Do you need a podium? Would it be helpful if... I think we could let you go over there.
I'll feel closer here.
All right.
I will flip through my notes probably, but...
All right, that's fine.
I appreciate the invitation to come and talk to you about Playhouse 2000 and the Calhoun Theater, our management of it for the last year. I'm going to go over a little bit of financials and some programming highlights, talk a little bit about the cost of running a place like the Calhoun Performing Arts Center and then be done, except for any questions you might have. I don't want to waste your time, but at the same time, I don't want to go faster than you can get the information I'm asking you to receive. So, at any time, feel free to stop me. But, for right now, is... Do I have a clicker that I can move things around?
Mike's going to click unless you want to do it too.
You're going to click that for me?
I'll do it for you, but if you want to do it, yeah.
I don't mind because there's a bunch of...
Okay.
So, 2023 was a year of great progress for us. The last time I came and talked to you, we were in the midst of recovering from the COVID crisis. I feel like we've made significant progress in the current year. We're not completely recovered, and this process is not done yet, as we'll talk about later. But, at least in 2023, I can report that we did have an increase of 25% in the total number of events in the Calhoun Theater itself. We had an increase of 15% in what we call lit nights, which is nights that there's something going on in the building. Up 105 nights across 365 days of the year, that's a pretty significant chunk of keeping the building active. Attendance at Calhoun Theater, specifically Calhoun Theater events, was up by 27% over 2022. That's 6,000-plus more guests in '23 than we saw in '22. And attendance at all events across the entire campus, and that includes everything from voting to dance recitals and plays at the VK Garage Theater and all those things, was up by 10,000 guests. So, we saw 34,400 guests in 2023. That's a number that's still significantly below our high numbers of pre-2019 of about 52,000 guests a year, which is certainly where we hope we are headed as we continue to recover. I want to mention that attendance continues to be skewed heavily toward the 78028 ZIP code. In prior years, we've been very proud of the fact that we are attracting people to Curville. More than half of our attendance normally comes from outside of the Curville ZIP code. Currently, our recovery is fairly local, but people are beginning to come again from the outer, outlying areas back into Curville. Our paid attendance was up 33% from the prior year. Part of that, of course, is because we had a slight ticket cost increase, but most of that relates to attendance. However, there's a couple of interesting things related to paid attendance. In this next slide, you see the face value of the tickets sold, and these numbers are multiplied by 1,000. We sold a little bit more than $400,000 worth of tickets in 2023, and that's up 21% over the prior year. However, we should... We take significant note that the dollars per ticket sold across all events, that compares free events and fully paid events. Our dollar per ticket in 2022 was $23.45, and in 2023 was $27.20, which is a 16% increase. And when you note that our attendance was up 25 and our paid attendance was up 21, but our paid per ticket was only up 16, what we're seeing is a significant level of price sensitivity among our audience. It informs our decisions about how we price things, and where people sit in the auditorium makes a huge difference in how they enjoy things. So, we're being very careful as we look at ticket pricing as we move forward and how that relates to future attendance. So, an overview then of financial activity for 2023. We are... I'm still working on projected numbers because we haven't finished '23 yet, but we project that we're going to finish the year just short of $905,000 in income, of which 262.5 comes from ticket sales directly. We had two very unusual income items in 2023. $137,500 came to us from a bequest from the Delgado Trust, which is actually an offshoot of the Mary Rowey Trust. It's a remainder from Mary's trust that we worked with a decade or so ago or so. There's the words I wanted. And we also had a $110,000 multi-year grant from the Coats Foundation related to our reclaiming our youth theater program, rehiring a youth theater director, and relaunching youth theater programming. So, that $110,000 is going to be spread over three years. Also, individual gifts were strong, $78,000, $72,000 in renting the space, $37,000 significantly from two grants, the Peterson Foundation and the Community Foundation, and $20,000 in corporate sponsorship. All that goes together to make up our $900,000 in revenue. We spent that in the following ways. Here we go. We'd have a total projected operating expenses of about $800,000 roughly. Our biggest line is $261,000 in payroll. Facility expenses just for the Calhoun Theater, and that includes all expenses related to things keeping the building open, $126,000. The other two buildings combined have facility expenses of about 16.5. And significantly, I will mention that program expenses, what everybody knows us for, doing our job, was $290,000 in expense. And of that, 137-plus was artist fees, bringing people to Curville, investing in the kinds of things that people are coming to Curville to see. So, our projected net operating income for 2023 is roughly $100,000. But, if you take out the unusual income from the trust fund, that comes down to a negative net income of about $31,640. I will note that that was a budgeted net loss. We actually budgeted to lose about $38,000 last year, so we're coming in slightly better than we thought we might. We do, in our five-year plan, show three years of recovery budgets. We came in negative last year. We will come in negative again in '23, and we also are projecting a smaller, but still significant negative balance in 2024. In fact, let's talk about 2024. Our current budget for operations in '24 is income of about $742,000. Earned income accounts for 52% of that number, which is a strong number in our field. Anything above 50% coming in in earned income, which for us is ticket sales, facility rentals, tuition, those things, make up about half of our income, which is very strong. Contributed income is almost 30%. The management agreement from the city accounts for 14% of our current estimates for income in '24. Our expenses are projected to be about $761,000. Of those, our biggest expense, once again, it's payroll, about $309,000. The Calhoun Theater accounts for $118,000 in expense. The other buildings, about 15. Once again, our program expenses are coming in as our most significant cost, $253,000, of which artist fees account for $114,000. Both of those numbers are currently depressed somewhat because we are unable to budget for artists coming to the building after about May because we are not certain of what the construction project will take up. So, we are currently on hold with several performing arts activities that would start as early as May, and we haven't issued any contracts, and so they don't currently show up in our budget. Our net operating income, as I mentioned, is slightly, but not zero in negative net income, about $19,000 negative. I do want to highlight, if it's all right, specifically, direct income and expense related to the Calhoun Theater itself, as it is a portion of the entire operating space. Direct income from operations of the Calhoun Theater, by which I mean ticket sales for events happening in that building, public support for... specific to that building, and rental fees specific to that building, plus the city's $100,000 management fee, comes to a total of $338,100. At least, it's projected to be that in 2024. Our direct operating expenses, which include things like personnel that are specific to that space, insurance, and other things that are operationally related to that space, utilities and other facilities costs like groundskeeping and window washing and those kinds of things, and then program costs that are specific to the Calhoun Theater itself, come to about $398,000. So, what we see is that there's a revenue deficit, as there would be in almost any performing arts center. But, I wanted to make sure that it was clear in front of everybody. The revenue deficit for this space is about $59,000, $60,000 in the coming year. That money is made up by net revenues from other operations that take place on the building, Playhouse 2000 operations, but more significantly by fundraising and individual gifts, which is frankly, one of the reasons I think that it's in the city's benefit to make sure that your operating agreement is with a nonprofit like Playhouse 2000. We are far more capable of attracting contributed income, and that helps to support and subsidize the activity that's going on at the Calhoun Theater. I just wanted to draw that out there, just because I think it's important to have those numbers in front of us. Some highlights of events that happened last year. In January, we had the Zuzu African Acrobats here. They performed both in our Calhoun Performances Series and for 1,500 elementary school students. That's our Young People's Performances Series, which presents free events to school-age kids three times a year. In February, we partnered with Shriner University as part of their centennial to present the Centennial Musical, which happened to be Rogers and Hammerstein's musical, Me and Juliet. In May, just the month of May alone, 5,000 guests attended events at the Calhoun Theater. Everything from professional jazz to high school events to a school dance recital, a big band that played on Memorial Day. So, May was a big month for us and always is. In June and July, more than 2,200 children presented... attended the six performances that are provided free of charge by the library. All of those events are made possible by the library incurring no charge from us for space or personnel. So, we're proud that we're able to make that possible. In August, our biggest seller of the year, we sold 1,000 tickets to see our production of A Murder Is Announced in August. In November, this is a big one for us. In November, we hosted the Texas Association of Private and Procurial Schools, TAPS, their one-act play state finals, which has been happening at our space for many years. 18 schools, more than 1,000 guests here in town, more than 410 hotel room nights associated with that event, and brings a lot of prestige to both Curville and the Performing Arts Center from parents who are coming here from all over the state. And then, we are currently in December. We have eight events that will take place in the building just between the 1st and the 20th of December, and we'll see more than 4,000 guests in that month alone. Highlights of upcoming events in 2024. The second half of the Calhoun Performances Series will be taking place in the first few months of the year. In particular, we're proud of Lisa McLaurie and her tribute to Cher, which is called The Beat Goes On. That happens in January. An amazing bluegrass ensemble out of North Carolina, their name is Balsam Range. They come in February. And a group that does an incredible recreation of Queen in concert. They call themselves the Kings of Queen. That's going to be a very popular concert in April. Playhouse 2000 has announced our '24 season. It includes The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime, which is a play that won both the Tony and the Olivier Award for Best Play. It's a part of our season that we call Playhouse Now, which separates it from our main season. It is absolutely new and cutting-edge theater. We're very excited about it. We will go back to kind of traditional theater as we present Brigadoon in April. We're excited about that piece. It's going to be a big old happy musical. Shakespeare in the Park will be back in Louise Hayes Park at the end of May, the beginning of June with The Comedy of Errors. And then, our first return to our summer musical theater camp for kids. We're doing Shrek the Musical Junior in August. So, that's exciting. This last notation mentions other events, space permitting. This is where we are currently kind of at a standstill. We know that we want to present shows when the building will be open. That could include events scheduled for the summer of '24. The Calhoun Performances, of course, is scheduled to start again in September, and Symphony of the Hills is scheduled to start their new season in October. The concern we have right now is that we simply don't know when we can plan, and unfortunately, we also don't know when we will know. So, where I am right now is kind of a holding pattern. We have several potential contracts waiting for me to make offers so that we can bring people to town. The difficulty is that whether the building is open or closed, if I haven't issued contracts, nobody's coming anyway. So, the sooner we can know a little bit about when we can make plans, that will be advantageous for us and certainly the renters down the line from us. You know, the Symphony of the Hills, if they can't start in October, they surely need to know as early as possible that they won't be able to do that. So, the more information that we can get, the better off we feel like we will be. And I believe that concludes what I brought to report to you today, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might... Oh, I'm sorry. I did want to talk about this. These are some things that we feel like did get accomplished during 2023 related to the facility. I apologize for skipping this. The new lighted sign was installed after being damaged in a power supply failure. The parking lot plantings were replaced after they were damaged in the ice storm. We reinstalled and/or replaced decorative and safety lighting across the entire campus, including very beautiful lights. That's the replacement lights on the Calhoun Theater itself are, I think, strikingly beautiful. And we completed an upgrade, update of the green room facility in the Calhoun Theater, make it a little bit more comfortable for the artists who are visiting. So, all those things were achieved during the year. In the other two buildings, we replaced part of the main heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system at the VK Garage Theater. We did some upgrade to the exterior finishes. Some of that's going on right now. If you drive by our space on Jefferson Street there, you'll see the new VK Garage sign, which is really beautiful. We eliminated an unsafe condition that was being caused by water from the condensate pipe on the Annex Theater, running off into a sidewalk. We had to make sure we got some of that taken care of. So, the concerns that remain are the... We appreciate sincerely the progress that's been made on the roof and the HVAC. Now, we just need to have a better handle on when to expect things to change, and we will feel comfortable moving forward. So, now I think maybe I'm ready for some questions.
One question, and it may be a premature question. At one, I thought that I had heard that maybe you might have... be able to set up some alternative places for possibly plays, concerts, whatever. Is what... How much of a reality is that, Jeff?
The only alternative that we have direct access to, of course, is the VK Garage Theater. And our current plan moves all but one project from the Playhouse season into the VK Garage Theater, but it's simply inadequate for much beyond plays and even a small musical, perhaps. Other than that, we are working to identify alternative spaces, but we haven't found any yet.
The Arcadia, Shriner, something... Some of those possibly, but...
I think there's a lot of possibilities, but none of them... For instance, should we ask the symphony to play at the Arcadia Theater, the space is inadequate. Nothing wrong with the space. It just won't hold a symphony and their audience.
All right. Is there a contractor already assigned to this, to the repairs and stuff to the Calhoun?
To the roof repair? I have not heard.
Okay. Michael, do you know?
No, ma'am. With the funding just secured, we did contract with Peter Lewis's firm to get us to 100% construction documents, which we thought we were there. And unfortunately, Mr. Lewis came back and said that the HVAC units that were utilized in the design are no longer viable options as after January of 2023. And so, we are now negotiating with Mr. Lewis to update those construction plans and have yet to finalize that. So, we were ready to put everything out to bid to get going and have a timeline for Mr. Brown to take to the board and talk through. It's a phased plan. It's going to have to be, I think. We have not finalized that discussion, but we still need to get to these 100% construction drawings so we can start working on schedules because the lead time for many of these items is significant, big HVAC units, right? So, more to come on that. No contractor selected, though.
So, that's... I mean, just to clarify, you manage the Calhoun Theater for the city, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Under the management agreement we signed.
Okay. So, the challenges that you're facing regarding being able to schedule acts or concerts or whatever is... hinders upon our ability to be able to get the financing in place and the bids out. And can you... Can you give me some idea on what that timeline is to get that accomplished?
So, each of the projects that you all pondered and EIC approved for funding, you're all going to have different timelines. What we want to bring to both EIC and to you is not to suggest that there's a grant agreement between EIC and the city for just $4 million, right? We put a number to what the theater is. So, we want to get a closer approximation from Peter and his team. And again, we thought we were there, but we're not. And so, once we have that information, we have to put forth the grant agreements between the EIC and the city. Those have to go to public hearing. So, we have... If we go through the process that we normally go through, it'll be come ask city council to go forward with this project, go ask EIC to consider the project. EIC sets a hearing for that project, and then you all ratify the grant agreement. So, several iterations to get to that.
We're talking several months for that? Am I correct?
I would say so. March.
March.
We'll have information from Peter. Yeah. So, for the construction documents, they're going to need some time to redo those. That part in and of itself, independent of the agreement between the EIC and the city. So, those timelines can run concurrently because we've already paid Peter to do the work, but they need to update those plans. So, like we said, six months for some of the lead times, which is why October kind of came up. But, now, we're going to have to amend those dates, so.
And just while we're talking about timeline, without putting too much pressure on the thing, my... To be able to recruit the kind of act that we have been able to bring here is a lead time of between 12 and 18 months. So, signing contracts for $25,000 for an artist to appear here is something that I'm not willing to risk without knowing a little bit about whether I can fulfill it, you know?
So, we're already looking at minimum October, but possibly even into 2025?
Really, as soon as we can get those construction documents done, we can get a schedule that we can present both to you and to the board to figure out what... how we're going to do it, right? If it's going to be a full closure, which I think is really hard on the theater, right? But we, you know, you all as the owners, will mobilize one time and get it all done. But, there is a phased approach in the plan, and so I think, you know, we want to figure out a way to be, you know, accommodating to the theater. And I think there's a way to do... There's a way to do both, and so it's really just presenting you all with the options of, you know, what will this do to Mr. Brown's operation? And, you know, we talked about a three-to-four-month window kind of being their maximum that they could withstand being closed, you know?
And preferably not at Christmas time.
Right. Michael and I talked about not all months are created equal in my calendar.
Right.
There are some months when being closed would hurt me far less than other months.
Yeah.
And I say me, and I apologize for using a personal...
Well, no, it's going to hurt you either way. It's going to hurt either way, no matter when it gets done, so.
The progress is worth the pain as long as it's... We can keep it as light as possible.
Okay.
More to come.
And I want to thank you for the quality of performances that you're bringing in. I just... I hear really good things in the community, and you guys, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And your reputation is stellar, and I think it is backed up by your attendance. Your numbers are up, and that's excellent.
We are working hard to buck a national trend, probably an international trend on attendance. We are ahead of some places in our ability to get people back into the hall, and we're going to work until we get back to everybody being comfortable outside their house and in our house. We're looking forward to that.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I've got one thing.
Yes, sir.
We attend quite a bit, and I've had people ask about it. Like, I went on the other day to get tickets for Cher.
Okay.
Queen. And the side seats, I know one side's reserved for the Calhoun family and the foundation.
The boxes.
Yes, sir. But I've had a lot of people say, "Man, those boxes are never utilized, and we would pay money for those seats." Is that something that y'all can look at?
They are available. They're box office only, so you can buy them. The reason they're not available online is because they are occasionally restricted to use by sponsors. But for most concerts, calling the box office makes those seats available. I will tell you that the standard policy on the box seats is that they are three times my highest price in the hall. So, if the main ticket is $50, it's a $150 box.
Okay.
But they are frequently available, just not always, and that's why we don't make them available online. I appreciate the question.
Two things that I have.
Yes.
When you talked about your budget for '24.
Yeah.
And there were some contracts that you hadn't finalized yet.
Right.
Are those contracts, are the preliminary numbers included in their budget?
No.
Or so we could probably see a greater loss?
Yeah. No, I don't think so. We very rarely do a project that is revenue negative on its face.
Okay.
So, if we are able to rebook June, July, August of '24, chances are we could eliminate up to $10,000 of that deficit. I don't think we would see it increase. Where we might see it increase is if I have to lose October, November, December.
Okay. My other thing was, I'm pleased to hear that you're getting your youth program back up and running.
We are too.
That was something that, you know, I was...
A veteran of our youth theater program here at the DAS.
Yes. Not as a performer, but with the tech and the stage director and stage manager, that was amazing. So, who do you have doing that now?
Her name is Emily Olson. We hired Emily in August, and she's been laying the groundwork ever since. Emily is a double master's degree candidate. She finished her... Most recently finished her master's degree in directing at Baylor. She taught high school for five years, both Florida and Texas. She has a degree in theater for young people. She was part of a... She was the outgrowth of a national search for a new director of youth programming, and she's made possible by a grant from the Coats Foundation, at least for her first two years. So, it's very exciting. She's... I think she's going to be excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Jeff.
All right.
Thanks again for your time. I appreciate being able to be in front of you today. Thank you.
All right. I believe then we are ready for a public safety facility update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we do have a public safety update. Members of mayor, members of the council, we do have a public safety update for you today, and I'm going to jump in and get Mr. Tony Battle here, because when he's done with this, he's got to drive to Bandera for his own city council meeting. We're done. So, I will turn it over to him. You want to, you can stand here, you can stand up there, it's your choice.
Up to date on my shots.
Well, mayor, city council, city staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here again with you today. Just as a refresher, my name's Tony Battle. I am the president of Burn Construction Services. This is going to be pretty quick. I'm going to try to keep it pretty succinct. You're going to see some of the same information as you've seen before. That's deliberate. I'm going to try to do that for you every time, just as a little bit of a refresher, and have some continuity as I present to you each time. So, we'll dive in here. This is the design build approach. You saw this the last time I presented to you. There was check marks above the first two areas here, the, the programming and, and confirmation and the schematic design. We completed those before I came in front of you the last time. We've now completed design development. So, design development is exactly what it says. It's where the design really starts to develop, and we, we really start to nail down what each space in the building is going to be utilized for, what the AV components in that space are going to be, really start to kind of nail down the different parts and pieces of the building. So, I'm excited to say that we made it through that DD phase, which is a, a big milestone, and our budget has held. So, I'm going to get to that in just a second. Where we are now is, is early work packages. And so, as I talked to you about a little bit last time, is the whole point of a design build is to fast-track the process, try to hit the ground running, try to circumvent getting all the way through design and then bidding a project and all what y'all were just talking about a minute ago, taking so long to, to do, we're circumventing that process. So, we are here today to talk specifically about those early work packages, and there is an action item on your agenda tonight. And so, I'm going to try to give you a little glimpse into what that is, and if you have any questions for me, hopefully answer those for you so that it's an easy agenda item for you to approve. The next two will be construction documents and then, of course, the, the GMP. So, our budget, when we got to the completion of our, of our schematic design, we were a little over budget. We did what's called a cost-of-value options or a value engineering effort. We talked about that last time. It's great to do those efforts, and we put a benchmark as to what we hope that is going to, what the outcome of that is going to be, and it's always the design development phase that then kind of nails that down. So, I'm happy to say that the fruits of our labor made it into those documents, and we are under budget currently. So, we're just slightly under budget, but as we begin to procure more items, we'll start to see exactly where that, where that goes. So, we're, we're still on target. That's the good news for y'all today. So, here is a diagrammatic schedule of events, and so the grayed-out boxes here are kind of items that are complete, and then the blue boxes are items that are forthcoming. So, you can see that, that the three phases that, that we are, we're complete with, and then there's these early release packages or early work packages. So, civil and electrical is what we, is, that's the nuts and bolts of what we, we need to talk about this evening. There will be another package coming to you for structural and mechanical procurement. And so, move down to the bottom of this sheet, and you'll see that the program confirmation, again, complete, complete, complete. Construction documents are anticipated in February. That's another huge milestone. We are anticipating the, the project completion sometime in second quarter of '25. And so, again, over to the side, the early release package for MEP equipment November, early release package for front-end trades, another one in December, and then we are anticipating mobilizing this month. So, we should start to see some action onsite later this month into January. So, here is our different early work packages, so EWP's that we are going to request action from council on. So, the first one here, the blue boxes, the other two are for future. So, you're going to see this, this next slide, or the same, the same slide the next time I present to you and the next time. So, again, for continuity. So, this early work package is our civil and electrical equipment. So, what that entails is our, our utility infrastructure, all of our site work, and then our long-lead electrical items. So, our switch gear, and so for a building like this, you can imagine the switch gear's huge. The lead time on something like that is a minimum of 50 to 60 weeks. So, it's a year. We haven't recovered from COVID in electrical gear at all. We really haven't in mechanical equipment either. This includes the generator, which is an important piece for a facility like this. So, lead time on generator, same thing, it's over a year. And so, we need to get in the queue, right? We need to utilize some dollars and procure those items so that, that we, we have those secured for your project. So, it's all about thinking ahead. So, that, that item is complete, and we're now asking for action. So, you can see here, action in December of 2023. On your council, in your council packet is a little bit more information about that along with an addendum, and the amount for that is right around $7 million. So, the authorization of that $7 million will allow us to mobilize, get our insurance and bonds in place, get our trailers, get our folks working, you know, out there onsite, and then procure those items that I just discussed. So, early work package number two, that'll be for our structure. That'll come to you at some point in January. So, this is a glimpse into the future. That'll be concrete and steel primarily, and then our mechanical equipment. So, that's the next segment of work that we need to focus on. And then the guaranteed maximum price sometime in March, which should be the last time I have to come in front of you to get action for the entire guaranteed maximum price for the entire project. So, those are TBD and forthcoming. Again, just another way to look at this, I wanted to put this in kind of a graphic format for you to really understand how important these council action milestones are for us to begin work. So, you can see the, the diamonds here, the little orange diamonds are council action. So, we get that, that action today. It releases the scope of work. We can start moving forward. There's some overlap on those, which is purposeful. So, we have a little time, but we'll come to you again in January and in March, and then that kicks us off for, for the remainder of construction.
Awesome.
This is an exciting item, so forthcoming in the, early in the new year, we have a groundbreaking scheduled for January 9th. So, it'll be onsite. A couple of pictures here of what groundbreakings tend to look like, so you can, you know what you're, you're up against. Pretty quick event. It'll really be led by the city. It's whatever y'all want to discuss with the public at that event. We will provide the tents and the shovels and the hard hats and, and all that, and some food and refreshments will be provided by us as well. So, that is all I have for you this evening. If you've got questions for me, I will happily answer them now.
Good news.
Yes.
Also, questions?
Great news. Onward.
Okay. I am going to leave, because I have to get to my council meeting in Bandera, but Josh will be here. Josh is the project manager. You're going to see him all the way through construction. He's going to be kind of the single point of contact onsite along with the superintendent. But if you have any questions tonight during your council meeting, he will be here to answer those questions.
You're...
Okay, you bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and safe travels to Bandera.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Chief, anything you want to add? Chief, anything you want to add? Okay.
We're excited.
Yeah. All right. Good, good. All right. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I appreciate my hard work on the timer, you know? He doesn't want to. Tell him I said that. I do.
We'll say it's very, right now, they have to, they have to spend a day, each of them, part of the day picking out the interior finishes, and it's fun to watch a couple of us, you know, try to navigate the carpet and the tile and matching them, and I, I don't get involved in any of it. I just tell them it's kind of...
Don't you need a couple of good women to do that?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm, I am, I couldn't hear the question.
You're excused. You're excused. All right. Well, good, good, good news. Okay, we are ready for item number three, executive session, and I do believe that we are going to go into executive, executive session under 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. Anything, Michael, you need to tell us before we continue?
551.074, ma'am.
Well, I had it down, and then I, then I couldn't find it again. Okay. 551.074. I took it out at the last minute.
No, ma'am, I don't have anything more.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, we, we have a second to the motion. Second. We have a second. All in favor, right hand? And it is unanimous, and at 4:48, we will recess into executive session upstairs.